We're going to call a meeting in order. Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Steele is absent. Member Lionwell here. Member Frederick here. Member Billsboro?
Here.
Member Holbrook?
Here.
Member Union here. Member Lake?
Here. I think you, I'm sorry, but I think you need to leave the door open in case anybody comes in so they don't think it's closed.
We're going to have a presentation from Lake Middle School Literacy Committee.
We are. So I've got three members of the committee here with us. It's a new committee that we started this year at our school and their goal is to foster a culture of literacy at Lake Middle School. So they're here to talk about some of the things that we're doing and some of the things we hope to do in the future.
So I'm Max Nizala. I teach eighth grade United States history.
Kathy Adamona, sixth grade English.
And I'm Ryan Johnson. I teach seventh grade Lake science.
Yep, so like Jacob said, we just started these committees this year and this new committee is centered around, you know, fostering that culture of literacy engagement. And so we brainstormed at the beginning of the year what it means to read, what that may look like in our classrooms and how, you know, that culture can be spread not only in our English classes but along the whole school in general. And so this is just a quote that we have that is kind of, you know, our why. And the more you read, or the more that you read, the more things that, the more things you will know, the more that you learn, the more places you'll go.
Okay, I have to say that one again because he didn't say it like Dr. Seuss. So the more that you read, the more things you will know, the more that you learn, the more places you'll go. Dr. Seuss says, "Oh, the places you'll go."
All right, thank you, teacher. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have the tune. I do have the data. So we essentially, in the beginning of the year, around September, we sent out a survey to get a feel for where we're at as a building. And essentially, a lot of that data came back with teachers offering such as Mariah. She offers content to her students that isn't directly in the timeline of their curriculum. But part of that community of learning, that culture, is we are not just reading what we are doing now. We want to expand our knowledge greater than what it is. And teachers, in another survey that we sent out in late February, I added in a question here, and you can see the pie chart to the right, that teachers are willing to read 15 minutes a week to students on their content. And now you may be wondering, why is this an important question? Why does this matter? Well, when a teacher is reading, hopefully, the students are following along. They're expected to be following along. And when they are doing that, they are able to follow how words are being said, how, you know, how, even as little as how long are you supposed to pause after a comment? And a lot of these small things build up to the comprehension of the text that they're reading. And also, if they were to stumble upon a hard word, you know, a student may ask, what does that word mean? And the teacher can direct them, well, let's use our context clues. And there's these little moments in those times that foster a great, yeah, great learning to how am I reading, how am I breaking down and using my skills and my logic to understand more of what the text is saying? Just under half of teachers are reading content-based material more than three times a week. And we've noticed some of the holes in our data pertain to math teachers. And so that is also something that we are working on. How can we also foster that environment in a subject such as math? And last thing, we've had a small growth, even though this has been a new committee and that teachers, you know, may not be fully familiar with the goals that we have, that is also something that we are trying to get the whole staff on board with a clear message of this is what we're trying to do, this is how we are doing it, and this is what we want our future to.
Another event that we did, so we've been trying to incorporate reading events throughout the year was National Read a Book Day. We took the first 15 minutes of our first hour, like, right before class, kind of during their passing time, and they got to pick a book and they got to enjoy reading in their different classrooms. So a lot of these pictures up top, one of the teachers shut off all the lights and, like, encouraged them to bring, like, a flashlight to read in their classroom to kind of make it more engaging. And Max said it earlier, we're trying to incorporate these little things to, like, build to a higher engagement with books, reading, like, that really big culture of literacy we're trying to establish. So we celebrated this on September 6th. This was, like, our first event that we rolled out to students, and it lands on every year, so this is at the same day. This is something we hope to continue.
And hopefully, at some point, this will be something that sixth graders, you know, as they, as they grow up, it's seventh grade, we're looking forward to the Read a Book Day. Eighth grade, we're looking forward to the Read a Book Day.
Another thing that we did this year, we did teacher literacy posters. Each teacher was given one of these posters in their mailbox. We just made it on camera really quick, really easy, and teachers were just given kind of an open frame on how to do this, just to post what they're reading, which is really neat. So in the top left, that person just uses a whiteboard marker to fill theirs out, and these are posted in the hallway, accessible and easy to see for all students. And then the bottom left, Mr. Clark, one of our teachers, he did it with a few of his students as well, which was really cool. And then our librarian, hers is neat. She always has a paperback book and an audiobook on hers, kind of to show the difference in how you can read and take in literacy. And then some teachers, like the bottom right, put what they're reading and then keep the books that they've already read.
And we just had, since it's March Madness, we, we bring March Madness all into it. Actually, our sci, one of our science teachers, they're doing a March Madness with animals and we, in sixth grade English, we're doing a poetry March Madness. And so this is the March Madness book brackets that we did, and one of our other committee members kind of found some books that are popular for middle grade levels and varying genres. And in our focus hour, the kids were given these links and they listened with headphones and then they were book trailers and they filled out all the books and we're going to get the results later this week. She just said she's got them all tallied. And so for kids doing this, they're, like, they got it, they're going to get a ticket and they put it in and there's going to be some random little prizes that they're, they're going to get and to encourage them to read the books that are popular in their age group right now.
And Mr. Coomber on the morning announcements, he is saying a book synopsis of, he does one book a day, and I've even, I mean, I have a smaller class of 20 in my first period, and I have at least three, four, five kids a day that are, you know, I can hear them discussing, oh, that sounds like an interesting book, or, you know, would you read that? Like, I think I would read that. And it's those conversations that we want to encourage in the classroom.
And then another part to March, March is Reading Month, we've had dress-up days. So we did different themes. Monday was Monochromatic Monday, so they did Picked Color of the Rainbow, to show that reading comes in every shade. And then Tuesday was Twin Tuesday, and they got to show that reading's better in pairs. Wednesday was Workout Wednesday, Max is up there in the middle, to show that reading works on our brains. And then Thursday, we did Tropical Thursday, we don't have any of those pictures up there, to say that reading takes us places. And then Friday was your favorite book character Friday.
And this is a book club of students that has developed out of them wanting to emulate a teacher's book club that we started. So a group of teachers that, I think it started right at the end of the year, we read one book at the end of the year?
Yeah.
Yep, and then really got going this summer, and the kids heard us talking about the book club that we were doing a meeting once a month. And so some of them went to Mrs. Stahl and wanted to start a book club, and they have been meeting, I think, about three weeks. And so these are the kids in their first book, and they are, they've had more than this, but this is how many showed up for the picture that night, and they are really enjoying themselves with that.
And Kuwanis, I believe it was Kuwanis?
Yeah.
Sponsored their books, which is really neat, so they got to all of their books.
Yeah, they bought their books. And then I think the next one is us teachers' book club.
Yeah.
Yeah, so these are those of us who are meeting right now within our book club as teachers.
And even some of the kids as well, you hear them in class, like, you should join the book club, it's so much fun, and, you know, like, the word is spreading around this stuff. And as, you know, right now, this is kind of a new thing that we are fostering. And so you hear these conversations and then, like, I always think, like, what could come out of this next year and in a couple of years? You know, what could we grow this into? So leading into May, we don't have any pictures up because this is something that we are planning to do, and so I think it was last year we started to do our Carrying Cardinal drawing. So if a student was found doing a good deed, they would be given a Carrying Cardinal ticket that they would fill out. You just put their name on it, they put it in a basket, and then each week there'd be a drawing for two people to earn a small prize. And we had an idea that what if we did that but students reading? So many times, students that are those high achievers get overlooked in our classrooms, and we want to reward them. So we had an idea that if we did something similar to that Carrying Cardinals ticket, we did a Caught Your Reading Month of May, so during the month of May, each teacher would get a stack of tickets, and then if they saw any students that were reading in their classrooms without being told to read, then they would just quietly walk by and put it on their desk. And then similar to the Carrying Cardinals drawing, they'd put that ticket in a bucket and then that would get drawn out at the end of each week in May. Yeah, so we're going to have book prizes for that. And Kendra Bonginor, she was unable to make it today, but she is reaching out to local businesses to see if they're willing to donate anything for us to use for prizes for the students. We just have a few future goals. We would love to do an author visit, but those can get pretty expensive. And we've been figuring if we did one every three years, so that each group of students that came in through the middle school got a chance to be a part of one of those author visits, that would even be worthwhile for them. And the average cost of these author visits range from about $1,000 to $3,000.
So the next one is partnering with an elementary classroom, and I teach a sixth grade elective on service learning, and I've done it for a long time in my previous district too. And one of the most rewarding things that my kids did is wrote their own books and then walked to the elementary school and sat down and read them with the kindergarteners there and then gave their book to the kindergarteners. I would see even the toughest toughies just glow with sitting with a little one next to them, and it was always the most completed assignment I ever had, like, 98% of them. They'd tell their moms, kid, this school that I've got to work on my book, I've got a kindergartner depending on me to get my book done. And so we would love to do something like that and make my class this week, the last two weeks, has partnered with our CI classes, and my kids have gone and read to people their age, but, you know, a little bit of a younger understanding. So this is something else that we would like to do. As I'm looking, I have some pictures to look here. Yep. So that is, that is one of our other wanna, want-tos.
And then any questions that you guys have for us?
I have two questions. Is the book club only an eighth grade thing or is that something that you're doing sixth, seventh, and eighth?
Yeah.
And then my other question was, can you possibly send home the list of those brackets of the most popular reading for?
When they're announced?
Yeah, make birthdays and Christmas a lot easier for me. I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, we could do that. We could probably, we could probably print off, like, a filled-in bracket to put some of those synopses on them, I think, absolutely.
Another thing about the book club, so that's an after-school program as well, so that's really cool that kids are, like, deciding to spend their time after school to, like, have that time together to read and have discussion, and it is in Mrs. Stahl's room, it's open to all grades, so.
And all of our kids had to fill out an interest form in their focus hour. We put links in our focus hour Google Classroom and, because they wanted to get an idea about how many kids would even be interested in it before they even started it, so.
How well is our library, middle school library, equipped for books that the kids would enjoy reading?
I think it's, I think it's well-equipped.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Heather is our librarian and she does great with that, so she's fantastic.
She's really made it a point, sorry, ma'am. I was going to say, she made it a point this year to really beef up our ML books to our multilingual books. At the beginning of the year, that wasn't a very big section, and I worked with her to make sure we got some of those books in other languages or that are in both English and Arabic or English and Spanish. And so she's really boosting that up and she's always on, she's constantly curating more books for us to add to our collection there at the middle school.
And I was just going to add, she's very personable with the students and you hear her when she's communicating with kids just as they're checking out books, you know, do you like this book? Do you like one similar? She kind of, I actually spoke to her about it recently, and she was talking about, oh, she just kind of, like, keeps this stuff in mind, she kind of finds patterns with students, and she keeps that in mind when she is ordering books, too. So I think that our collection is just going to grow stronger as, not just numbers, but that piece of engagement for the students to want to read.
There's another thing, we have a new book shelf that's there on stands when she gets new books in, and she does it thematically. So like, right now, there's a lot about, like, Ramadan and the Arabic culture is out this month on there, and some other month, it might be baseball for spring or things like that, and she puts different genres that meets her theme for the month, and then the kids can check those out from that shelf, too.
I'm curious about this reading program that you were telling me about, where an older student would take a book and read to a younger stu, what age would be the older student and what age would be the younger student and what book? I mean, the book they, that they personally wrote or what?
Yes, yeah. So I, this is my fourth year here, and I previously taught in Battle Creek for 21 years, and then I moved here, got remarried, moved here. And so what I did, I had to teach the reading, like, how, how, the writing process, like, the.
The rare.
Oh, my gosh, my words are leaving me. I never, so I had to teach that. So what we would do, we would study well-written children's books, and we would find what, what do they do good? They have large print, they have not a lot of words, they have good pictures that go with the words, they, you know, have characters that are fun and things like that. So we'd study all of that, and then my students, seventh and eighth grade students is what I taught there, they would write their own children's book, and then we would take their book that they wrote, I, I used Donors Choose to Get Light Booklets, that they would then draw their, their books, pages, and sometimes we would type the words, sometimes the teachers would write the words. The first year, we wrote the words, and I didn't think we were ever going to get the words all written. So we wrote the words or typed them and put them in there, and then the kids would take those books across the street to the elementary that was across the street from my building, and we worked it out with kindergarten and first grade teachers, and they, as their service, they gave their book to the child that they read with. And then I know a lot of teachers kept them in their book racks for the rest of the year and then let the kids take them home at the end of the year.
So kindergarten, first grade?
Kindergarten, first grade is what they were targeted for because they were, they had studied children's books, yeah.
Seems like a very nice program. Thank you very much.
The thing about the technology today that we have, compared to, like, four, five years ago?
That was, like, 10 years ago.
You know, the kids could just talk into the computer now and it would type up something. So, I mean, I think it would be a very, you know, I wouldn't say super efficient, but it would be more efficient, it would be more easier, and it would be more applicable to the students if they are taking that ownership for what they're bringing to younger ones.
I'll thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, you can stay for the rest of this exciting meeting, or you can escape if you wish.
Thank you.
I do, I'm sorry, I don't want, I do just want to say that this is a new committee and, you know, just like the point of life is, if we knew what we were, you know, heading into, then there'd be no point at all. So this can grow, this could be, you know, something that could be, you know, something huge and something that our school and our district as a whole, you know, gets behind. So I just want to leave you guys with that.
And you're also reading Max across the curriculum.
Yes, yes, yeah, it's not just English, I mean, I, you know, I'll shout out Heather over there, my teaching partner. We are, you know, really constantly adding primary sources, adding secondary sources that may be controversial with other secondary sources, and the interest in that, too, of, you know, can you be the one that spots the difference? And kids kind of really enjoy it.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Are there any individuals that would like to address the board? I have no slips. We have the approval of the minutes from the last meeting of February 24th. Zero motion.
Some support.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have agenda additions and deletions.
Yeah, we have two under action items, Roman numeral seven, item number one, request to approve the 25-26 Coldwater High School Program of Studies. It's been asked of us by the high school if we push that back to April to give the high school more time to look it over, and there might be some possible changes to that. So they didn't want to jump the gun, so we'd like to take that off and put that on the April agenda. And there are additions to the personnel report. Those will be the hiring of Alicia Turpstra as JV girls softball coach, the resignation of Rick Yearling as the boys bowling coach effective immediately upon board approval, and the resignation of Madison Klotz as the middle school track and field coach effective immediately upon, upon board approval. Oh, yep, thank you. And accepting with regret after serving Coldwater Community Schools for 25 years, the retirement for resignation of high school teacher Jennifer Milligan effective May 31, 2025.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda, communications, none? Personnel recommendations? So you can run right through them?
Be it resolved that relative to certified staff recommendations, the Board of Education accept with regret after serving Coldwater Community Schools for 33 years, the retirement resignation of Jeff Skorfar effective May 31, 2025. The Board of Education accept with regret after serving Coldwater Community Schools for four years, the retirement resignation of elementary music teacher Janet Brisa effective July 1. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ the following secondary teachers for the CHS Summer School Program, Stephanie Spolier, lead teacher, Gwen Chavez, math teacher, Deb Warner, math teacher, Alicia Turpstra, English teacher, Joe Clausen, online teacher. The Board of Education accept with regret after serving Coldwater Community Schools for 25 years, the retirement resignation of high school teacher Jennifer Milligan effective May 31, 2025. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Cheyenne Rubino for the part-time caregiver positions at Kids Club effective March 3, 2025. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to terminate the employment of part-time bus monitor Shel Hoffman effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Victoria Dow for the part-time bus monitor position effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Latifa Cartit for the part-time bus monitor position at Coldwater Community Schools effective March 3, 2025. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Amanda Wasekowsky for the part-time subsupervisor position for Coldwater Community Schools Elementary Buildings effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Ricardo Hope for the bus driver position for Coldwater Community Schools pending background check. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation for the following extra-duty positions as outlined below. Relative to extra-duty staff recommendations, Sarah Davis, class of 2029 co-advisor, Annie Woolerman, class of 2029 co-advisor, Jeremy Douglas, middle school tennis co-coach, Mitchell Duda, middle school tennis co-coach, Alicia Turpstra, JV girls softball coach, the resignation of Rick Yearling as the boys bowling coach effective immediately upon board approval, and the resignation of Madison Klotz as the middle school track and field coach effective immediately upon board approval.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of February accounts for payment and financial statements. Be a member.
Be it resolved that the following accounts for February be approved for payment as follows. General fund account in the amount of $2,61,301.73. Special revenue accounts in the amount of $236,833.40. And be it resolved that the general fund financial statements be approved as presented.
Thank you very much. Acceptance and approval of gifts, be a member, Dean.
Recently, the administration was made aware of the following gifts offered by the donors listed below. Recognition and approval for acceptance of the gifts are being sought. Donor is Coldwater Cardinals. They gave $8,000 to the elementary special teachers through the Coldwater Cardinals Elementary Boosters. Additionally, the individuals listed below have received monetary funds from the Good, Better, Best Grant through the EB Klein Youth and Family Center. Ray Henderson, Jefferson Elementary, $500. Jamie Swartz, Max Larson Elementary, $500. Elena Sefransky, Lakeland Elementary, $300. Renee Connor, Jefferson Elementary School, $500. And Pamela Hamilton, Jefferson Elementary School, $150. The gracious and continued support of the donors listed above is sincerely appreciated. We ask that the Board accept the gifts, noted and acknowledge the donor's generosity. So be it resolved that the Board of Education greatly accepts the gifts as presented and be it further resolved in a letter of appreciation on behalf of the Board beset the donors indicated above for their worthwhile and generous gifts.
Thank you very much. That is the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have building reports. Ms. Hardway, I like your hat.
Thank you so much.
Any principals have anything to add? You might want to discuss some of the individuals in your school.
Well, yes, we have a lot to celebrate at Coldwater High School, so Mr. Farmer, you see right there, is District 7, Athletic Director of the Year. Karen Kiss was recognized by the chamber, was that last week? Branch County Teacher of the Year, thrilled about that. And then Evan, and help, somebody help me say his last name?
Oras.
Paradas.
Paradas, yes. Evan Paradas is the national. Evan Oratus is the National Merit finalist at Coldwater High School.
How big is this region that you're... The athletic director, does it encompass three counties?
Goes from Lansing, a little bit north of Lansing, to Pass Jackson, to Ionia, and then down. So it's more than three counties.
Does that mean you're up for Athletic Director of the State?
No.
And then from there you go to the nation?
No, this isn't March Madness.
This is all you're getting.
Which is enough, you know, and when one of us win, we all win. So it's a good thing. I've heard that from some of us.
Thank you very much. Director of Curriculum Report. Our students are reading at a much higher level than they were before you started?
Middle school just gave a great presentation, so I'm excited the direction we're headed.
I'm glad you directed them to do that.
I'm not taking credit for that.
Board Committee Reports.
We have no committee meetings.
Superintendent's Report.
Just a few things, and those are at your desk to highlight, or at your station to highlight. Water Quality and Filtration Grant. We've talked about this water quality program that we've had to undertake and maintenance, especially Nick has been outstanding in figuring out what we have and what we need. And it's for filters, for drinking fountains, replacement of old drinking fountains with water bottle refill stations and everything that goes along with it. And Mr. Dancer applied for a grant through the Filter First Healthy Hydration Initiative, and Coldwater was recently awarded $225,349 for that project, which is great. I have to talk about the Aquatic Center. The open house at the Aquatic Center is fantastic. Thank you to everybody who came. We had over 300 visitors, and I even got talked into getting my picture taken with the mermaid.
Thank you, Heather.
It wasn't Heather. Don Reed got his picture taken right before me, so he kind of, he said if he had to do it, then I had to do it. So it was a really nice time. I want to do a shout-out to Jimmy Johns because the food trucks that we had scheduled, that Audrina had scheduled, backed out on us in the last minute, and she contacted Jimmy Johns. And not only did they provide food for a cost to us, but they also matched what we were ordering and doubled our order. So another nice thing that comes from them. On the therapy dog subject, Sarah Newbecker from Lake Linda Elementary is working with Magnum K9 to finalize the training for her dog to join us at Coldwater Community Schools. And again, I have in my notes, congratulations to Todd, Region Seven Athletic Director of the Year. It's very well deserved.
Thank you. That's it?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Any discussion items? We'll move on to the action items. Number two, recommendations to purchase 2025-2026 Student Athletic Accident Insurance. We've been doing this for 49 years. It covers $25,000, up to $25,000. And then we also purchase catastrophic insurance and heart and circulatory insurance. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the renewal of the Student Athletic Accident Insurance Policy with the first agency of Kalamazoo, Michigan for the 2025-2026 school year at the amount of $30,721. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education approves the purchase of both catastrophic and heart circulatory insurance policies with the first agency of Kalamazoo for the 2025-2026 school year at a cost of $2.98 per student athlete. Is there a motion?
Some support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on this catastrophic insurance. I'm not sure what page it is, but under covered activities, there's a box checked that says "intercollegiate athletic activities only." So am I to assume that this catastrophic insurance covers athletes, band members, majorettes, cheerleaders, school authorized, non-playing student team personnel, including travel and a designated vehicle? Can it cover all that?
As I understand it, it's only for students who are recognized as athletes.
So...
So it would not cover band, no?
Or cheerleaders?
Correct. Well, it would if they were in a, yeah, yes, because cheerleaders, I'm sorry, cheerleaders are recognized as athletes.
But we have the student athletic, or not athletic, the student insurance that we...
Yeah, we have separate, yeah, we have separate coverage through SETSAC for any student who gets injured, or any individual who gets injured on school property.
So this form says 600 athletes, 600 athletes, but it actually could be all of our athletes? The number doesn't have to be 600?
Well, I think 600 more than covers the amount of athletes that we have. Am I correct? Correct, yeah. So we don't have over 600 athletes.
It would cover all grades?
Yes.
All sixth graders even?
If we have organized athletics in sixth grade, then yes.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion on anything?
We had a motion, support.
Okay, roll call.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele is absent. Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the Board Resolution to Consider Designation of the Electoral Representative for the Branch ISD Biannual Election. Be it resolved that the Coldwater Community School Board of Education adopts a resolution to consider designation of an electoral representative and an alternate for the June 2, 2025 Branch ISD Biannual Election as presented. Be it further resolved, the Coldwater Community Schools Board of Education appoints later as the designated representative and the alternate, as an alternative representative in the event of the designated representative is unable to attend. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Support. Do we have to decide on people before we...
Yeah, we have to figure it out. Who wants to go?
I went last year.
You what? You went last year?
Wait, is there a date? Oh, June 2nd.
Yeah, June 2nd.
Steele's not here, maybe we could make him go.
Very good job last year.
Who?
Claire.
Oh, she did a good job.
Great job last year.
I just hear you say it, it was nothing to it.
Second district, second district.
What day?
June 2nd.
It's Monday?
You said okay?
No, I said what day?
June 2nd.
I'll do it, that's fine.
Yeah, you're a veteran. Alternate, jump in here.
It's an evening thing, since it's Monday?
I think it's four.
I think it's like four o'clock in the afternoon.
It is, yeah.
It's kind of like I hear Bob from a bar in Florida saying, "Pick me."
You hear the O.K., the sea shall...
Oh, wait a minute, this thing says six o'clock.
Oh, and then six o'clock, that's even better.
Even better. I'll be the alternate if we still need one.
You guys can go out for a drink afterwards.
Perfect.
Good work. So we're going to fill in Claire Dean and Kristen Lion Welch for those. And it's a roll call vote.
Member Frederick?
Yep. Yes.
And member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Steele is absent. Member Lake?
Yes, motion passed. Next, we have the request to approve the eighth grade student trip to Trine University in Engle, Indiana. Let's see, Lake Middle School Principal Jacob Pomer is requesting board approval of the eighth grade class going to Trine University on April 8 and 10. So they're going to split the grade in half and pick half and...
It actually works wonderfully because around that same time we have to take our PSATs, so we have half the students on a field trip and half the students testing. And then the other day, the other half.
Lucky then. And the purpose of this trip to Trine?
Well, we've got a couple of experts in the audience, but I can kind of explain it. Heather, do you want to talk? No?
We're there to show the students what a college experience can look like. We show them all the different kinds of programs and hands-on things that they let us try there at Trine in different parts of their campus. They get to see the cafeteria and the dormitories and start thinking as they're going into high school about what that can possibly look like for them in their future.
Heather runs one of our electives at the middle school. It's called Game of Life. It helps the students with college and career readiness and their educational development plans that they have to work on.
Can they go to the fraternity and sorority houses and have a beer?
I think we talked about that being off limits, right?
Yeah, unfortunately, no. And the teachers can't either.
They're not getting a full experience.
I mean, approve it overnight.
We'll just do the day trips, sir.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the request to the student trip to Trine University in Engle, Indiana for eighth grade students as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Support.
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the middle school sideline cheer club. Athletic Director Todd Farmer and Coldwater High School varsity sideline cheer coach Alexis DelSandro are requesting board approval for the middle school sideline cheer clubs for the fall seasons. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the addition of the middle school sideline cheer club for the fall seasons as presented. Is there a motion?
Some support.
Any discussion?
Yes, are they covered by athletic insurance?
They would be, yes.
They would be, even though it's a club.
I believe so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve Jefferson School Field Trip. Jefferson School Elementary third grade teachers have requested board approval for a field trip to Solder Village in Archbald, Ohio. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the request for the field trip to Archbald, Ohio. The purpose of this is to expose them to Native American and pioneering paths, I believe. Is there a, there are several dates here, May 16, 22, 27, 28. So you must split the class into four?
Well, yes, because of bus.
Is there a motion?
Some support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Have I forgotten anything?
Nope.
Request to approve the design and quote from TMS for graphic wrap on the two new district vans. Administration's requesting board approval for the design and quote provided by TMS in Coldwater for the graphic wrap on the two new district vans. The total cost for the wrap will be $6,462.88 for both. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the design and quote of $6,462.88 for the TMS for the graphic wrap on the two district vans as presented. Is there a motion?
Some support.
Any discussion?
How many quotes did we have?
Just the one, because we wanted to stay as local as we could. And with it being per van, per vehicle being under the threshold, we, actually, the threshold for going out for bid is over $28,000. And since this was much smaller of a cost, we wanted to keep it local if we could.
Are they going to be numbered?
Yeah.
Not by, not by them, but Holly has the numbering system that she uses. She's got the cricket.
And the design. You can show it.
Actually, that's a good rate because we've paid to wrap contractors' vehicles before in the Kalamazoo market, and you're looking at closer to $5,000 per vehicle. So really locally, that's a good price.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve renovations to the softball field and a quote from Snyder and Sons excavating for 54 tons of washing ball mix. What is washing ball mix?
That was my question.
It's just a topsoil that just helps. It doesn't saturate the field, so we can get on and play a lot quicker than if it's just, when it rains. It's just a special soil.
Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved for Coach Buckland to do the labor with his equipment for the needed improvements to the softball field. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education approved the quote from Snyder and Sons Escavating LLC for 54 tons of washing ball mix in the amount of $7,296.40 as presented. I would add that there has been a bequeath, a gift of $5,000 to offset the price of this so that the district will pay $2,296.40. Is there a motion?
Some support.
Second, any discussion?
Will this cover both diamonds?
No, just the varsity field.
Does it cover the warning track?
And the warning track that they're putting in, yes.
So who's making the $5,000 donation? The boosters?
It's anonymous.
It's anonymous.
They asked to be anonymous.
That's nice. Thanks.
You know the timeframe of this time?
Well, if you drive on your way home, you'll probably see it out there on your way home. It's good that they got started before we approved it.
Well, everything's ready to go. As soon as you're done, I'm texting them and they'll start doing it. So they're waiting.
They're waiting.
They're so full of it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Hold on, I'm sending it to them right now.
Recommendation to accept and approve the superintendent evaluation, which will be after the closed session. So we need to have a motion to conduct executive session pursuant to 67, Section 8A. For the purpose of considering a periodic personnel evaluation of employees, a roll call vote is required. Is there a motion?
Some support.
You may call the roll.
Okay. Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Steele is absent. Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsboro?
Yes.
And member Lake?
I'll get to it.
So we're in closed session.